Good evening, everyone. The City Council Committee on Public Safety, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. There is no citizens' input. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call for us.
Council Dion.
Here.
Council Kilby.
Here.
Chair Hart.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Anyone for citizens' input? Number two is the minutes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The third is the resolution. Committee on Public Safety convened quarterly with Police Chief, Fire Chief, and Chief of EMS for updates. You guys want to come down? Mr. Agia? Michael Dion? Yep. And Mr. Remzi? You're on deck, if you need it?
If you need me.
Okay.
You're limited on the chair.
Yep. Hello. Thank you. Welcome. If we can just go around the table, introduce ourselves, starting with Chief Fattato.
Chief Fattato, Kelly Fattato, for our police department.
Michael Dion, interim city administrator and executive director of community development.
Jeffrey Bacon, for Fire Chief.
Beth Florence, EMS chief.
Richard Agia, AMI Director, Chief of Special Services.
All right. Thank you all for coming. We really have a good, this is a good opportunity to show the public and the community on these quarterly reports. Why don't we just maybe start with Chief Fattato?
I would have picked another seat. Okay, so why don't we start with our manpower? Which is at the back of that.
Okay.
So, obviously, we all know, I think everyone here is in the same position, manpower is a major issue for the police department. We've gone through a lot of retirements, a lot of people on what you'll notice in the last pages is terminal leave. There's people on terminal leave. So, what we have now in the Patrol Bureau is the different divisions. The A Division has twenty-five officers assigned to it. Where we would like to be is ideally, ultimately, in a great world, forty officers per division. We would settle for thirty-six.
What department is this, please?
The Patrol Bureau.
Thank you.
Same thing. The B Division is twenty-six. The D Division is thirty. That's because we just got an influx of the kids that just, the officers that just graduated the academy and just finished the FTO program. So, we put them on the D Division. That's where it was lacking the most. So, we're up to thirty right now. We are keeping them there for a little bit because we're going into firearms training season, which will be over the next month. The night officers have more opportunity to go during the day to the range to qualify. Where it's lacking is in the D Division, because they only have two days to go. So, we felt that leaving the new recruits on the D Division will make up for, we'll be able to send more of the D guys and get that done. We've tried to, it's been a month, sometimes six weeks or two months to get that done. We've really tried to bring that down to three to four weeks, where the fourth week is remedial training and the retirees. So, if you see on that, you'll see there's seven new. I always want to keep saying kids, but I know that that's not politically correct. They are kids to me, but they're the new, right? The new officers. They're in admin week right now. So, they just graduated on Friday, seven of them, which is great. So, they will be starting their admin week. We'll have the swearing in next week, and then they'll start the FTO program. They should be good to go sometime in December. So, that'll be an additional seven people to patrol. The Major Crimes Division has nine people assigned. Ultimately, I'd like that to be at twelve, where six officers work during the day and six officers work full-time at night. The Evidence Room, right now, is one. We need two there, which we will get that right after, right after the range and the qualifications, we'll have a second person there. The Crime Scene Unit is at two. They're totally depleted. We'd like to be at four. The Cast Team is actually at six. I have eight there, but it's actually six. We'd like to be at ten. The NEAT is at six. We'd like to be at eight. Haba Patrol, it says two, but that's only because one person's in training. Once he's done with this training, that'll be down to one, and that's fine. SROs are at seven. We have one SROs out on maternity leave, but ultimately, we feel ten would be a good number to adequately to adequately cover not only just the, we're getting a lot of calls for not just the public schools, but we also have many of the charter schools, the Catholic schools. So, we do cover a lot of those. The EPOs are at three with, we would definitely like to be at six. And what we would change about the environmental, which takes care of the waterways, so part of the six would be, the Haba Master would count in that. But what I would like to do is have them not just patrol the reservation, but also take over the parks, like the old park police. The parks really need some attention, you know, and we would, we would have their hours that coincide with the park hours.
And Chief, just to interrupt you for a minute, with the SROs, you said we have what, seven right now?
We have seven right now.
Okay. And does that, so they still go from some, maybe spend some time at like three hours at one school and go to another school?
Yes. So, they're each-
Is it too, is it would be too much to ask if we could have, I mean, I know it'd be a tough task to do, but I've heard a lot maybe of, maybe just one officer in each school, but that's-
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
I know, but we, yeah, we can't, I mean, we don't have the numbers for that, but is that something maybe that you could-
So, ultimately, what I would like to do is have the two at Durfee, like it's always been, right? Two at Durfee, one at Diamond, and that's sufficient. One permanently at each of the middle schools, right? So, that's-
Right, exactly.
Right. So that they're there. But now, they're covering the middle schools and all the elementary schools, and then they're getting pulled for other things, too.
I mean, they're all, they're all important, but I think the middle school is-
Right. And I would like them to be able to spend more, more time there, you know? In this packet, you'll see a breakdown of what the SROs have been doing. The motor vehicle unit's four. Obviously, you'll see in some of these stats, accidents are like out of this world, right?
Yeah.
We would like to have six officers where we could do a lot more traffic stuff. But the problem with the motor vehicle unit, which we ran into this summer, is that they're pulled a lot to do processions. We've had forty-one processions, and they just keep upping and upping. So now, instead of out there doing traffic and monitoring traffic, they're being pulled to do, to do these parades. We were able to, with the mayor, cut that down to one mile. They used to, it used to be three, four miles. I would need like six, seven officers to shut down roads. So, working with the churches and the different groups, we have gotten them down to a one mile. That's the, that's, you cannot go farther than one mile. You can't go on main, main roads. But still, we're up to forty-one now.
Is there any way perhaps moving forward that somehow there could be some consolidation of?
I'd love to have one big, long procession, once a year, right? One, lot, so the churches have their feast, but then they have the Holy Ghost. So, each person, each person who has the Holy Ghost wants to do, then they have their band clubs, then they have, they have their committees, and each one wants to do their own procession. Right.
Oh, you, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's culturally, it's very, very important, and you know this probably better than me. And shorten them, it was a, I think was a great idea. Put some restrictions there. So, but that's going to be tough territory to breach with those clubs-
Oh, absolutely. Yep.
Because they're, they're very internal. They have, you know, it's kind of, it's not private, so welcome to the public, but what gets generated from that is fundraising for their membership and for the, pay the bills and things like that. So, how about the environmental, not environmental, the voluntary police that we used to have?
So, right, so the auxiliary police were disbanded.
Yeah. Is that the union issue, or is it?
No, no, that wasn't a union issue. So, Post came down, so basically, what happened is Post said that you cannot have auxiliary police. And the reason why they said you can't have auxiliary police is because, so around this, at Bristol County, we call them reserve police officers that have, like part-time police officers. The towns have reserve police officers. They are police officers, right? But they only work part-time. Well, like out in Western Mass, they don't call them reserves. They call them auxiliary. So, Post said you can't, you can't have, they said auxiliary police have to be certified police officers, right? So, our auxiliary police were not, they didn't go to the academy. They were just volunteers. All we should have done was changed their name-
Yes.
-instead of disbanding them.
Semantics, yeah.
But once they were disbanded, they did not want to come back, you know? So, um-
Okay. I don't want to interrupt your presentation too much, but that is-
But we do have five people, yep, it's tough.
With the feast, with the processions-
It is. Yep.
-to breach with the various clubs, and it's a good thing for the community.
If we could just get them to have like, so here's where we have the problem, is when there's more than one in one day. So, that's what happened with our motorcycle accident. You know, the officer was hit and hurt. They were, they were going from one to another to another, you know? So, we're working on, we're working on the permit process with the, with the mayor's office as far as, you know, you can only have one, or, you know, blackout dates, different things that, so there's not multiple, you know? Or, you have to, you have to step off on time, you know? That's, that's a problem. They don't step off on time. Like, nine o'clock is your permit. They're like, yeah, at eleven, we'll go, you know? So, but we are working on it, and the churches are very good, and they understand. It's just we don't want them to go up more, you know? But it is a nice thing to have things like that in the city, you know? People like it, and we're not opposed to it. It's just that we would like more manpower so that we can handle it, so that the city can enjoy things like that, right?
Is it too late to change the label, reserve now, from the auxiliaries, and get, and get recruitment going on for?
Yep. So, we, so we have a volunteer service unit. So, we are up to, we did another drive this summer to try and get more, and we're up to five, you know? But ultimately, to make a difference, you need like twenty to thirty, because not everybody can make it every Sunday or every Saturday. So-
Okay, thank you.
You know, so, okay.
Unless I, you want to go along?
No, no, that's good. The housing unit, we're at two now. The housing pays for up to five. Now, they're just paying for two, because obviously, we don't have the manpower for that. So, ultimately, what I, where we would like to be is a hundred and ninety-two officers. That's, that's like the best, right? Obviously, that's probably not realistic. So, one eighty is where we would like to be as far as manpower goes. Right now, we're at one fifty-three total officers. There's twelve in the academy right now, and so that brings us up to one sixty-five. The problem with, that we have is there's a hundred and fifty-three officers, but there's only a hundred and thirty-two that are active, right? So, there's twelve long-term sick, two on administrative leave, four on light duty right now. So, that's right now today. The long-term sick, that's a couple of guys got hurt. They tore their triceps. They, they've been out on surgery, they've been out with surgery. The other ones are out pending retirement, injury retirement.
And you said twelve right now are in the academy?
Yes.
And when do you, so what's the, so where do you see them coming on the force?
So, they just, they just started the academy.
They just started, okay.
So, you're looking at really like eight, nine months.
Yeah, okay.
You know, that's, that is also the problem. It's just so long, long-term. It takes just the hiring process and going through the academy, then the FTO training, and everything that that entails. You'll see the calls for service. I just had our crime analyst look up from January first to now. That's, there's been thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-nine call-
Where is this?
At the beginning of the packet.
Oh, right at the beginning of the packet.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. Thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-nine calls for service, which is actually down from last year by four hundred. Mental health calls for service from January first to September seventh is nine hundred. Two point four four decrease in mental health calls. We can skip over the Gabriel House fire. That's just a breakdown for, if you want to take a peek at that. So, officer initiated and proactive enforcement, which is, which is important. This is proactivity. Not just reactive policing. So, there was six thousand, five hundred and eighty proactive calls in nine months compared to last year's, which was five thousand, four hundred and twenty-one. So, over a thousand more proactive calls. But we have less officers. So, that's makes, makes a difference also. The homeless encampment calls also is a, you know, we speak about this often. There was total of six hundred and fourteen calls regarding homeless encampments since January first. Of the six fourteen, there was four hundred and twenty-four were proactive patrols and enforcement. So, the, that included the rail trail behind Taco Bell, bottom of Kennedy Park, Bessie's Beach, which we don't have too many problems down there. Twelve oh five Brayton Avenue, which is the, down at the bottom of Brayton Avenue, near, near the water there, the Dave's Beach area, Henry Street Boat Ramp, rail trail, again, bottom of Birch Street, and then behind Talbot Middle School, which that was very quickly taken care of that.
Yeah.
Do we have a, an idea of the-
Speaking to the mic.
Do we have an idea of the numbers of individuals-
That were-
-in the encampments?
I do not have that number.
Mike?
I don't have that number. I could cut it for you.
I can get you that number.
I do know that we are going out to the Kennedy Park, Middle Street-
It's hard to keep an handle on those.
-encampment next to do cleanup there.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
I could get that for you tomorrow.
And Chief, is, is the next page, the arrests, arrests in the encampments, or just-
No, no, no. Overall arrests. So, the overall-
As far as the encampments, excuse me, as far as the encampments, have there been, with the calls, that maybe neighbors are complaining or whatnot? Do those, are there, do we know how many arrests have been, have occurred at any of the encampments from any kind, any kind of disturbance?
No.
No, okay.
No. So, I didn't differentiate between places, but I can get that to you.
Okay.
Can you explain, so of the six fourteen, six hundred and fourteen calls, there was four hundred and twenty-four that were proactive patrols and enforcements. Can you define proactive patrol and enforcement?
So, whenever, let's take Middle Street for, for example, right? Or the rail trails. So, we call them code forty-ones. You have to do code forty-one. So, they're required to, if that's on their route, they're required to check in on those encampments, right? Most of them are probably warrant arrests, people dealing drugs. The cast units always in those encampments, guns, drugs, assaults. So, they go in there and proactively and come across crimes. You know? So, the arrests for January first to August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five were two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two. Nine oh six was summons, fourteen twenty-six was physical arrests compared to last year. The physical arrests are up. Warrant requests were four hundred and thirty-one compared to four twenty-four last year. Field interviews, that's just document, like community action. That's two ninety-five for up till August thirty-first to three oh six last year. The incident reports were six thousand and thirty-three reports. All reports, crime incidents were eighteen forty-nine, and no crime incidents were forty-one eighty-four for this year. That's no crime incidents. That's misimpersons, things of that nature that are not a crime, but like a domestic incident where there was just verbal, a verbal argument, they, somebody called accidents. Accidents are nineteen thirty-one. They are down from last year, nineteen seventy. The only thing I'm going to say about accidents, though, is that we take accident reports. The police department takes accident reports. If you go into a lot of other communities, they do not take accident reports. So, their accidents are probably like, it looks like nobody gets into accidents in their town. But we take even the mi, the most minor accidents because we realize that that helps people, right? There's nothing worse than dealing with insurance companies, and having a police report is, it's easier to jump over those hurdles when you have an actual police officer documenting stuff. So, that's part of the whole, taking accidents is really part of the community policing. We're providing a service for the community where, after the layoffs in, in oh nine, a lot of the departments stopped taking accident reports, and then when they got their offices back, they still continued on that layoff low number model. We, we didn't do that. We always provided this service to the community. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's a good policy, because I see that in what I do for a living.
Yep.
The-
You love that. We take accident reports.
Well, no. Don't get, don't get me joking a little bit here, because I can play around a little bit. So, it's ironic, I say, you know, I got a good case, but it's not a good case for the person, right?
Right. Yeah, that is true. Yep.
But, but anyway, so you probably go on a criteria, as if there's injury-
Right.
-and the amount of damage to the car.
Right, right. But even if there-
It's a good policy.
Even if there's, in this day and age, any little bit of damage is a huge amount of money, right? So, even, it used to be like under a thousand. We don't take a report. Well, I mean, you scratch a car, it's going to be over a thousand, you know, with the prices of everything.
And Chief, with these accident reports, do you know where most of them are occurring? Like, there's usually bad spots in the city where bad intersections and, are they occurring at those particular intersections, or is it pretty much?
There, there are a lot of different intersections that are hotspots, like Plymouth Avenue and Rodman. That's always a hotspot. And I think that has been the worst place because people have to wait for the light-
Right.
-because there's a lot of different lights there. So, they try and hurry up through the light, so they don't have, they don't have to wait for the whole cycle to go, go through again. There are a couple of hotspot areas. And most of these accidents are minor accidents, you know? Some of them are at four-way stop signs because they, they're like, oh, the other guy's going to stop. So, and, so that's, and a lot of it's people on their phones, distracted. So, move forward. Y'all start with the accidents?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm good with the accidents. And we just may-
Yeah, we got a lot to get through.
Yeah, yeah, maybe go through, maybe someone want to get the chief, the other two chiefs going.
So, the, the rest of the stuff is just basic, but what I do, you know, murders, and we've only had one this year, thank, knock on wood, thankfully. But these are just regular stats that are broken down. So, but one thing that I do want to get to is the confirmed shootings. So, the in two thousand and twenty-five, we've had seven, fifteen total, right? So, we've had drive-by shootings, where we've had seven of those. Property damage only was just four, non-fatal with three, and one fatal. That was at the beginning of the year with the domestic. So, we have changed for just, so the, where you just see casings and or target located, where there's no malicious, there's no damage to anything, nothing's been damaged, nobody's been hurt. We still send out major crimes now, and because we have done that, they have been able to solve some of those drive-by shootings, you know, and been able to, to locate people who are doing that. From January first to September seventh, we seized ninety-seven firearms. There were twenty-seven individuals responsible for them. And we're going to go over the DEA-
People for ninety-seven guns?
Yeah, so, well, exactly. Well, it's-
Yeah, apparently.
Yeah. So, some of them, we stopped a car the other night that had like four guns in them. So, some of these are, some of these are individuals that they've done, like the cast team has done, or MCD has done search warrants on the house, and they've had a cachet of weapons, you know? So, that's how, why those numbers are off. This year, we really worked hard at re-establishing our partnerships with the DEA, the FBI, the ATF, and because of that, this, this DEA Task Force Officer being assigned to the DEA, just in Fall River, or investigations that stemmed with Fall River people, eighty-four grams of methamphetamines, three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two grams of methamphetamine clandestine. That's three kilos of that. Crystal meth, which is becoming a major problem here in the city. That's a kilo of that. Fentanyl, five kilos. Fentanyl liquid form, fifteen milliliters. Fentanyl pill forms, five hundred and twenty dosage units. Co, the cocaine, which is, that's what we're seeing more now. The fentanyl's dropping off. We have a rise in cocaine and crystal meth. Twenty-two thousand, fifty-eight grams, which is, which is roughly twenty-two kilos that have been seized since, since January. From the DEA, firearms, three complete assault rifles, thirty-nine ghost guns, twenty-two machine gun conversion devices, three rifle suppressors, one fifty-round drum magazine, and ten thirty-one round magazines. So, the seized assets, you can see it's broken down. The total value of US currency is five hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Some vehicles, jewelry, and virtual currency, which we're seeing an uptick of that. People paying for drugs through virtual currency. We get a portion of that. The average of, the average we get is twenty percent of what they take in. So, this, it's, it's important to keep those relationships with the outside partners because we, they do a lot of work here. If we have somebody assigned to them, then they'll want to come here and assist us. This is just raw data after that with the-
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look, we'll take a look at that. We want to get the other, other chiefs involved here. But thank you very much, Chief Fattato, for this. This is very, it's very news, good, newsworthy, alarming, but very- Um, but very, yeah, absolutely, so thank you very much for that. Chief Bacon.
Sure. So, uh, just to keep you aware of our manpower situation, um, we just started this week. We accepted our first two laterals that I can remember on the department, one from the Stoughton Fire Department and one from the Norton Fire Department. Uh, so our manpower right now is at a hundred and seventy-eight as we stand. Um, we have, uh, four new recruits starting on October sixth. Um, we're anticipating four more retirements in January, so we'll be looking to fill those spots proactively. And, um, we're anxiously awaiting, uh, the SAFER grant, the announcement on the SAFER grant, uh, where we hope to be awarded, we're optimistic that we'll be getting ten positions through SAFER. Um, just this week, we signed with the, uh, civil service, the local register option, which the police have been using to great success. Um, and that allows, uh, the, the, uh, the chief, essentially me, to establish a list that we can hire off of. And what I'll be doing with that is looking to hire people who are firefighters, uh, who are firefighter one and two, trained at the Mass Fire Academy and EMT basic, so that we can eliminate the, uh, the six-to-nine-month, uh, process of onboarding and get those people in the company within a very short period of time, hopefully within a month or two from when we, uh, we start hiring.
And how does that relate to the civil service list? So they're not coming off the civil service?
So this is through civil service, so they'll still be, so the way the local register option works is there's still a civil service exam. The traditional civil service list still exists, so you can take the exam and get on that list. But the local register option is a list that the community and the authority, uh, the appointing authority has to put whoever they would like on that list within certain parameters. So over the course of five years, it's a five-year contract with civil service. Over the course of five years, you can hire up to fifty percent off your local register. And the other fifty percent have to be from the standard civil service list.
So potentially, there could be people on the civil service list who have been there for a length of time and they, and these, and this other group would be hired before these people waiting on a civil service list?
Potentially, yes, yep. People who took the exam, yes, absolutely.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
You have to be fifty-fifty, it has to be fifty-fifty, like equal, equal amounts from the civil service list to the, um,
Yeah, over the course of five years.
Yep.
I know, I understand it's the fifty-fifty, it's just, um, the civil service list to me just exists for a reason, and to bump people who are on that list waiting for employment,
Mm-hmm.
um, just doesn't seem fair.
Yeah, it's a, it's, this is all done through civil service law, it's all been vetted. Uh, and it's an attempt to streamline the hiring process. It is designed more for police, because I think police have, have had shortages on their civil service list.
We exhaust the list all the time.
Right.
Like, we just got a new list.
You exhaust the civil service list?
Yep, we just had a new list and we exhausted it already, you know?
But in that case, I can, I can see it, but if the list isn't exhausted and now you're taking other people who, that just doesn't seem, I, I get they, they, they're allowing it, but it doesn't mean that I, or other people think it's the right thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm on that list, I certainly would wanna be hired before someone who's not on the list. I mean, that, that, that was the whole purpose of the civil service. If we were exhausting it, if you were exhausting it as well, then that would be a different issue, but,
Yep.
I don't know, I have a hard time with that, that's something I have to really think about, but.
Yeah, I could appreciate your concerns, and it's something that was intriguing to us and something that, um, we certainly, you know, we signed the five-year contract to see how the system worked, to see if it provided us a, a better product. But keep in mind, we are still going to, so let's say we get this SAFER grant and, um, with the four that we're anticipating, we hire fourteen off the local register. For the next four years, we're gonna be hiring all off that civil service list. So for those people, it's really just gonna, it's not going to ma- mean that they won't get hired, it's just gonna, they're gonna wait till, till the next hiring process to get hired. Because we won't be able to hire anymore off the local register for the next five years.
Now, on the civil service list, do they designate, for, for example, let's say four Fall River people took the civil service test and scored well.
Mm-hmm.
Are, are you aware of where they're, where the people are from who take the exam, who are on, are high on the list?
Yeah, so, um, you get residency preference, so the first fifty or so names on that list are all Fall River residents.
All right, so a Fall River resident wouldn't be bi- bypassed using this process?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely, but then they would have to, so they would have to move to the city as part of our, as part of the civil service rules. The other thing civil service did is with residency is starting, um, and this is for police and fire, for any civil servants, uh, starting in November. Um, you, you can either live in the city for a year leading up to the exam, which is the traditional way to establish residency, or if you graduate from a public high school, if you have graduated from a public high school in Fall River, regardless of when that was, you will be considered a resident. Which I really like, because there are people who, you know, who have family roots in the city, who grew up here, who lived their first eighteen years of their life here and maybe moved for a job opportunity for the military or for anything, and then come back to the city, they wanna come and serve the city, then they are given that, that opportunity.
So we have residential preference.
Yep.
Yet, we can hire somebody from outside the city who's not a resident before the resident who supposedly has a prefer, has preferential, uh,
That's correct.
That makes no sense to me.
Yep.
That makes no sense to me.
Yep.
To, to, to bypass residents of the city does not make sense to me, but with that, I yield, thank you.
All right.
And Chief, before you get going again, the SAFER, uh, grant for the ten positions?
Yes.
Um, when did you, did you say when you anticipate those coming on?
We actually anticipate at any time, we've been checking, um, they were supposed to have started awarding those as of Octo- uh, sorry, August eighteenth. But, um, in checking the website, it doesn't look like any have been awarded, so, um, I was, I'm not surprised. Uh, and the, the assistance to firefighters grant that we put in for earlier this year was supposed to be awarded in July, uh, and we haven't heard anything on those either, so there's a, there's a delay at the, at the federal level. Uh, they're awarded through FEMA, and I know that they've, they've experienced cuts and challenges, um, over the last six months. So I'm not surprised that, that there's a delay with the announcement of the, uh, of the awards. So, um, I think in working with, um, the administration, I think we're gonna be looking at, um, we're, we're budgeted at one eighty-two. As, uh, as you all know, um, we recently signed an MOU, uh, with the, um, the IAFF and Local thirteen fourteen to, uh, increase our staffing to four firefighters on, uh, six of our apparatus. Because of that, we're gonna increase our staffing level. Um, the number we're looking at is, um, is, to, to begin with, I believe is one ninety-five, uh, looking to get it closer to two hundred. I think the two hundred number is something we've been pushing for, that will get us somewhere where we'll, we'll still require overtime. Um, but it will be a less burdensome number of overtime than what we've been experiencing, uh, since I became chief.
That's, that's, dude, it's, it's about time, you, you got that.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
To me, that doesn't sound unreasonable, the, um, the one eighty-two right now, and the, the, I think, uh, the grant, it'll be ten.
Mm-hmm.
And then, then the city, it will be, will be for the, for the remainder, so.
Yeah.
I think it's very durable, so, um, hopefully, uh, we get that done for you guys.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll assess and see, because we're, we're constantly, um, trying to figure out what makes more fiscal sense to hire more and pay less overtime or to hire a certain number and, and backfill with overtime. So we'll, we'll reassess those numbers as we go and, and see what makes the most sense for the firefighters and for the city. Um, the other thing, the only other thing I really wanna talk about is, um, uh, I, I was listening, listening to the radio on the way in this morning, and there, there were a couple CO calls in the city this morning. Uh, we've experienced our first, uh, cold spell at nights, and I just hope anybody watching this realizes we, we always get space heater fires at this time of the year. Um, people who have decided to use their space heaters as storage for clothing, for Tupperware, for anything. Um, most of the time, those heaters aren't off, and they kick on when it gets cold, and we always, every year, will have that happen. So, um, I would encourage people to be vigilant about CO detectors, uh, get those changed. We're heading into that season where carbon dioxide is gonna be a problem, so get the batteries changed and, and, and check all of your detectors. Uh, Fire Prevention Month is in October, so you can get a leg up on that and, and make sure you're good to go with all of your, your detectors. Um, and, uh, and, and really make sure your heating units, any, whatever you're using to heat your apartment is good to go, so.
Awesome, Chief, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Chief?
Good evening.
Oh, sorry.
Um, I put together, sorry, I put together like a brief overview, a little bit of, um, what we're looking at for, um, the next five years for EMS. I know there's some confusion with the changes increasing in some of the programs that we've offered, and I just kinda wanted to go over. It's not really perfected yet, that I feel comfortable hanging out. I will give copies at the city council meeting if you want it, but I'm, I still need to put it together, it's really a rough draft. But I do wanna start out with, um, a, a week ago, we did talk to the architect who, um, is working on the center station, uh, rehabilitation. And they said that they're in the construction document phase of the program. Um, we've, we've, uh, you know, the plans have been approved, so they're, um, drawing up the construction documents. They said that will take approximately three months, maybe four. And once that's completed, then they'll go out to bid, so that project should be able to get started, hopefully by the end of the year. So that's good news.
Absolutely is.
We'll see if it, we'll see how that goes. Um, so, um, obviously, the primary focus of our, our services and nine-one-one portion of the program, that's where we focus our biggest priority, is on public safety and, um, taking care of the citizens of Fall River. Um, uh, public safety, um, we, um, at some point may want to increase to another medical rescue, but we're kinda waiting until the, um, seventy-nine, um, renovations are done to see whether there's some feasibility to have more public safety. I think each and every agency here at the table may have to increase some of their, um, staffing and nine-one-one support of that area.
No question about it.
But it's a big cost factor to, it costs to, um, just about eight hundred thousand dollars, just in staffing, and that doesn't count the truck and everything. So we kinda just, kinda wanna wait and see where that goes. But right now, we seem to be doing well with our nine-one-one program. Everybody has been kudos, we have had some mutual aid calls in the city, but nothing in excess of what we haven't seen in the past. We're still way lower than other surrounding communities with the same, um, base of numbers of population, so we seem to be doing pretty well. I know the area of concern mostly is our IFT program, that seems to have been a big topic of conversation. So I just wanna say that, um, that program is currently where we want it to be. There's no, um, no inclination with the EMS division to increase that program. What we wanna do is we wanna refine the, what we currently have, we're happy where we are. We've increased our revenue by thirty-eight percent and we're kinda providing a good service, it's a comfort zone. So we just wanna keep right where we are and stay where we are with that program, so that way we can continue to provide good service, but we don't, we just wanna take care of our community. We don't wanna expand beyond Fall River, we just wanna make sure that we're able to take care of our own, and that's what our big priority is. Our MIH program, um, the Mobile Integrated Health Program, which is where we're going and do home visits for the elderly, and we take care of them so that they don't have to go to the hospital, and we do antibiotics and prevent admission and prevent, um, multiple ED visits. The program is loved by our elderly, they think it's great. And especially with upcoming flu season, keeping them out of the ER is, is great, because then we prevent them from getting sick. Um, South Coast and both lifespan are both interested in the program, so they've actually come on and we're, um, getting some backing from them, so that we'll be able to, be able to fiscally res- support that program without any accountability on the city side. And we'll still be able to, um, provide that service to our elderly, which is really, um, kind of important. And the other thing too is, uh, the chief talked about fire prevention, we're gonna talk about flu and COVID season. We'll be back out in the community in the high rises in the senior centers, offering flu and COVID vaccines to, um, our elderly population.
Great.
So how many, how many, uh, people are you servicing right now with that?
With what, the MIH program?
And, and how do you determine where you go or, or who, who requires the assistance?
So it's, um, people, people with certain hep medical conditions, comorbidities, congestive heart failure, diabetes, uh, congestive heart failure, the people that end up in the hospital over and over again. So what they do is when they get discharged from the hospital, they will create a referral and then we'll, we'll make an appointment with them, we go in and we, we see them, so that if they're going in like, you know, every three days or every five days, we can go in and give them breathing treatments so that they can stay at home. Sometimes the elderly people will go into the hospital for a urinary tract infection and they'll get discharged with an antibiotic. And then when the culture comes back, it's not the right antibiotic, and they'd have to go back into the hospital and get readmitted. So we go into the house and we, we are able to give them that antibiotic, so it prevents them from having to be admitted for two days.
So ultimately, the individuals reach out to you?
The hospital gives us the referral, we call them to see if they, and we set up the appointment with them, yeah.
Okay, you, you reach out to them, okay, thank you, that I yield.
All right, go ahead.
Any other questions, I was gonna go to Mr. Agia, good sir.
Thank you for having me tonight. So in lieu of the, um, Gabriel House fire, um, normally I send out a question, a form to all the high-rise buildings, daycare centers, nursing homes, and I, after that, I follow up with a letter. So now what they're doing, they're sending me, um, all the residents who are disabled in the apartments, um, whatever floor they're on, they're sight impaired, hearing impaired, walking impaired, so we have a copilot now. Um, and once, uh, I already gave some of the stuff to the fire department, so once they continue to come in, which they're all coming in now, after the letters I sent out, uh, we're gonna have a better idea of where these people are in these high-rise buildings. Like the Gabriel House, um, we didn't know where anyone was, but now we will know in the high-rise buildings, assisted living buildings, um, particularly the high-rise buildings in the city, um, so it's gonna be a benefit to the fire department. If somebody is in a building such as the list states here, they'll know where to go right away to get that person out if he's walking impaired, sight impaired. So that's just the update on that that I've been working on.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Agia? All right. Also to you, I think, I think Chief E might have mentioned the, uh, Route seventy-nine project. And once it's, uh, developed, and that's probably in another ten years, um, did I hear right, maybe at the last co- public safety meeting or meeting before, that everybody's, are you starting to look at that particular area and seeing what is possibly needed in, to the police department for fire, EMS? And, and is there any planning going on, uh, right now? Um, or is it just pretty much, you, you're gonna start making, uh, plans to, to see what kind of, uh, because it's, it's gonna be a very difficult task, with those many buildings up and, uh, the population, uh, down there.
So it's a challenge, because we don't really know exactly what it's gonna look like right now, right? Or exactly what it's going to be. So until we know exactly how many units are gonna be, is it gonna be commercial, are gonna be restaurants, are gonna be bars, like what's going on? Uh, we, we, we're using, um, so we have a, uh, the city had hired a consultant, as you're aware. Uh, meeting with him, we're putting the finishing touches on, um, on what we had hired him to do. And one of those things was to kinda simulate what it might look like down there and create a call volume for that. So we're hoping to, to have just that kinda base model, that's just fire, because they only used our, uh, our, our runs for that. Um, but, uh, so we're hoping to have a better idea of what that might look like, you know, just, uh, so, so that we can, we can plan accordingly.
All right. Go ahead, uh, Counselor.
Um, have you been given a, a copy of the master plan that was, um, made for the RDA? Um, with, with somewhat of a visual of what that will be, is, has that been incorporated?
Yes, we kinda went off of that, and, and the best thing that we could do was find buildings in the city that most look like those and, and actually place those along that corridor to give us what that call volume would look like down there in those, in those facilities. Uh, we can also, um, once we know better what it's gonna look like, and once they decide, you know, how it's gonna be developed, we can look at facilities that are, uh, more similar from other communities, get their call volume to those facilities, and then use that to get a more accurate read on what it's gonna look like.
And Chief, uh, Fertato, um, in terms of the police departments, I mean, obviously, there's no doubt we're gonna need, all departments are gonna have to increase just because of the number of people that are gonna be coming in. Are there any, is there any discussion or thoughts about, um, the possibility of perhaps a, a substation?
Well, my concern, um, for that area being, uh, developed is the waterfront, right? So, we would have to, right now, we do have a, a harbor master, but our harbor patrol is not up and running, and, uh, we would have to consider that. Um, I've mentioned several times about, we actually need a harbor master station down on the waterfront. And we're trying to find a spot for that. Right now, they work out of the station, but that's not feasible. As boating traffic, um, becomes more prevalent down there, they're putting in more moorings and there's more restaurants opening up on, on the waterfront, more complaints are coming in. We'd like to be very proactive to keep it safe, uh, in that area. So that, uh, like New Bedford, that is eventually gonna have to be a whole unit down there.
Plus, we've increased, um, the number of docks significantly.
Right.
And then, yet to increase again, so, um.
I think one of the, one of the things we're looking at, and I spoke I think one of the, one of the things we're looking at, and I spoke with Sarah from the redevelopment authority, about a lot of communities now, and it's been done in the past, are looking at challenging the developers and giving them a benefit to putting some sort of a station as part of their building, right? So we looked at one, and I believe it's in Somerville. It's a new, a new section in the city where they took a parking garage underneath a residential building, or it might, it was probably a commercial space. And they put a two-story fire slash EMS station as part of that. And then the city pays rent and gives them, you know, some benefit to doing that. So it gives you the benefit of having that down there, including a police subs. Whatever we needed to do, we can look at that to get that right in the heart of what we need.
That's, that's an interesting thought, yes.
Yeah, it is.
Part of the large development. That, yeah, that is a, because I agree with Chief Fattato that that waterfront is gonna be a different animal in fifteen, ten, fifteen years from now.
And the more crowded it gets...
That's an interesting...
The more crowded it gets, the more important it is to have your people right there, not having to respond from the outside.
There already is a major uptick in boating already on the waterfront, you know, with the different restaurants that are opening up, and they're adding docks to their restaurants for people to come and go. So, you know, it needs to be, we need to keep an eye on that before it gets out of control. You set the standard before, you know, it gets out of control.
And I mean, there's nothing wrong, I always say, we look to other cities that are our size and maybe look for other areas like Newport, or I think we're gonna be bigger than Newport, but maybe look to those particular areas and see what they're doing. You know, there's nothing wrong with doing that as well. But it's gonna be definitely a big task, and we're gonna have to increase a lot of the department size.
I think New Bedford has a tri-station, right? They have a police station and a fire station and an EMS station, and they're all located in one, in one area.
Like a public safety complex.
It might be like if you just had a little bit of each, you know?
But I would add that, I mean, New Bedford is different. It's a fishing port mostly, right?
I'm just saying that the idea is that it's...
I know what you're saying, but it's, this is going to be more commercial, leisure, pleasure, boating. I just think, anyway, I don't think Fall River's gonna change into a fishing village the size of New Bedford.
I hope not.
But I know what you mean, it's the same type of, unfortunately not.
But, no, but you're still gonna have, you're still gonna have a significant influx of people, residents. Which requires, yeah, all three departments.
The recreational boating would, I would think, becomes a lot more dangerous than fishing vessels coming in and coming out, you know? They start getting a little reckless, you know?
Now, Mr. Aguirre, do we have your folks down? Are they here?
No, I'm gonna go check.
Okay. Might want to maybe, it's gonna be ending soon. Yeah. But as he's checking, I just wanted to also say that through all the departments during the tragedy for the Gabriel House, everybody stepped up, and it was really very good to see. And we're all very, very proud of all of you as much as you stepped up. And I can't begin to think how thankful I am. I just wanted to end with that as well. But I don't think we're gonna have that person here.
I'd make a motion to table.
Okay, yeah. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.